Good morning. Welcome, buddy, to the October 17, 2017 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. And this morning, we're very pleased to have Minister Tommy Tidwell from the South Cobb Church of Christ lead us in our opening prayer. And then we'll be followed by the pleasure of a lead. So those who are willing and able, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we are grateful to you for this day and for the blessings you have given us. We're grateful for the wisdom that comes from your word, and we fervently pray, Father, that you would please be with these commissioners as they make these decisions for the very best of the county. We humbly ask you, Father, that you would grant them wisdom. We pray, Father, that you would please be with our families as they sacrifice so much time and energy to try to do what's best for this county. We pray your richest blessings upon us. We pray, Father, for our growth, but above all, Lord, that we pray that all we do may be done for your glory, for your honor, and for the good of the community. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Just a small admin note. We do have one hearing this morning on OB 50, right, John?
OB 51.
51, okay. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna, after John does all the consent cases, we'll go ahead and do the hearing first and then do the rest of the cases, all right?
Yes, sir.
It just didn't make any sense to sit here all day for everyone to do the hearing. So we can get, we can do that business at the outset, okay?
Yes, sir.
So just wanted everybody to know that we'll do the consent cases first, and we'll do the OB 51, and then we'll do the rest of the cases as presented. Is that's okay with the board? I hope. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, with that, you got it, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. The applicant is requested to stand and signify that they are here, and then the opposition will be asked to signify they are here also, so they can be counted for the official record. After the counting of the opposition and the applicant, both will be asked to come forward, be sworn in, to present testimony to the Board of Commissioners. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if anyone, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets ten minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so convey all your information to the Board of Commissioners within your ten-minute time period. After the ten-minute time period, the board may ask one or more persons to come back to the front for additional questions.
Okay.
It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes, so you might want to coordinate with each other about what you're gonna talk about if more than one person wishes to speak on an issue, because you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after both sides have had their ten-minute presentation period, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more persons to come back to the front for additional questions or comments. And after that, the board will make a decision to either hold, continue, approve or deny the case they are considering. There are three cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. First case is resoning case Z 45, Trayton Homes LLC. That case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Land use permit number 23, Jenna Mason and Jakar Devon Cohen. That case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today, so LUP 23, it would not be heard. Other business number 28, S and B Investments Incorporated. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Mr. Chairman, Board, there is one case on today's regular agenda in which the applicant is asking for it to be withdrawn without prejudice. That's the resoning case Z 57, Delicent Inc. The applicant is asking this case to be withdrawn without prejudice, Mr. Chairman and Board. Z 57?
Yes, sir. In meeting with the applicant yesterday, the decision was made that he would like to withdraw without prejudice, so I'll make a motion allowing it to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
Call a question? Passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued by the staff or the planning commission and will not be heard today. First case is resoning case Z 12, SSP Blue Ridge LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the December, excuse me, until the December 5th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z 12 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 34, Josh Thompson. That case was continued by the staff until the December, excuse me, until the November 21st Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Z 34 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 44, Meritage Homes of Georgia LLC. That case was continued by the planning commission until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z 44 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 49, Waste Industries Atlanta LLC. That case was continued by staff until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z 49 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 56, Oakall Companies LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z 56 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 58, Lovea McMillan. That case was continued by the staff until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z 58 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 61, West Cobb Senior Living LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z 61 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 64, Branch Acquisition Company LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z 64 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 65, Victor Nowala. That case was continued by staff until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z 65 will not be heard today. SLEP 8, SSP Blue Ridge LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so SLEP 8 will not be heard today. SLEP 9, Waste Industries Atlanta LLC. That case was continued by staff until the November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so SLEP 9 will not be heard today. Other business number 40, Polty Home Company LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the November 21st, 2017 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so other business 40 will not be heard today. Other business number 45, Green Park PCH Incorporated. That case was continued by the staff until the November 21st, 2017 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so other business number 45 will not be heard today. Mr. Board and Chairman, we did get a request late on Friday, or on Friday, to continue other business item number 51, Race Track Petroleum Incorporated. So we would need a vote by the board to continue this case until your November date.
Mr. Weatherford?
Make a motion to continue Z OB 51.
Second. In discussion? Call a question? Passes five to zero. So that, I thought that was the only we were gonna do the hearing on.
The one we're moving up is the Chad Hoochie corridor certificate.
That's 50.
Yes, 50.
Okay, all right. So make sure the record reflects that, that it will be 50, not 51.
Correct. 50. Okay, I wanna ask the folks in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on the cell phones. The ringing does interfere with their broadcasting presentations, so if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within two years preceding the filing of a resoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 or more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this is on the table in the back of the room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to the Board of Commissioners the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the Board at their discretion. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for October 17, 2017. Resoning case Z 47, Hernan G. Guerrero requests a rezoning from R 20 to R 15 for the purpose of a single-family subdivision, landlot 91 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Harris Road, south of Smyrna-Powder Springs Road. Planning Commission recommends approval to the R 15 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on June 30, 2017, with the district commissioner approved minor modifications. Letters of agreeable stipulations from Mr. Garvis Samms Jr. dated August 15, 2017, August 28, 2017, and September 11, 2017. Applicants' representatives shall submit an addendum letter to the zoning division manager with a copy to Ms. Walsh and Mr. Porter by Tuesday, September 12, 2017, stating agreed upon conditions relating to fencing around needed attention upon and trees to be saved. And that is the letter that is dated September 11, 2017. Sidewalk to be located on the house side of the road. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations, and the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Resoning case Z 47. That the record shows no one opposed. Resoning case Z 52, Century Communities of Georgia LLC requests rezoning from R 30 to R 20 for the purpose of a single-family residential subdivision and landlot 229 of the 20th District. The property is located on the west side of County Line Road, south of Burnt Hickory Road. The planning commission recommends approval to the R 20 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on July 6, 2017. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore, received by the zoning division on September 27, 2017. Staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Inclusion on the consent agenda for the Board of Commissioners zoning hearing on October 17, 2017, subject to the applicant agreeing to the following three additional stipulations. A. Provide details of the density of the plantings along the fence on County Line Road. B. Provide planting of additional trees between some of the existing driveways along County Line Road. And C. Provide details of how the trees will be cleared and replanted on the lots as they get developed. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Resoning case Z 52. That the record shows no one opposed.
I have an addition.
Sir, go ahead.
I'd like to add a stipulation to the supplemental stipulation letter dated 10/12 by Mr. Kevin Moore, and item number five, the district commissioner approves final site plan with the possible option of a crosswalk to the existing sidewalks and elimination of sidewalks in front of the development.
Okay, so we're including the 10/12 letter with those conditions now, sir. So we're including the October 10th letter with those revisions, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Stipulation letter, October 12, but should it go back to the other one?
No, it should be the October 12th letter.
Right, that's one. Yes, number five.
Okay.
Yeah, is the applicant okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, my question, my point was that if they didn't want to do that, I was gonna ask if they could put into a sidewalk escrow fund if they didn't want to do the sidewalk. Because my concern is we have, we're spending a lot of money on splosh dogs right now putting in sidewalks, so if they didn't want a sidewalk, but you're gonna do that at plan review, so I'll let you, I'll let you handle that. Okay. That addresses my concern. Thank you.
Okay, and the clerk has it? Okay, thank you. Resoning case Z 54, Kennesaw Corner MF LP requests rezoning from GC to RRC for the purpose of student housing and retail in landlots 502 and 503 of the 16th District. The property is located at the northwest corner of Big Shanty Road and George Busby Parkway. The planning commission recommends approval to the RRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Letters of agreeable conditions from Mr. John Moore dated September 27, 2017, and from Kevin Moore dated October 3, 2017. Staff comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Resoning case Z 54?
Okay, we have, we have some questions from the board, John.
Yes, sir.
We received a letter late yesterday from the Town Center CID, and in discussing with the executive director and the board chair, and also with Mr. Kevin Moore, the attorney for this, and Mr. Johnson, Dana Johnson, from Community Development, there, there were some questions about the master plan for the Town Center CID, and if I could have Kevin come up, and then Dana, I'll probably need you as well. I just, I know you have talked to the Town Center CID folks as well, and I am, there were a few other steps that I, that we agreed upon that I would like to add to this. And in addition, I'd also like to add a step regarding the master plan for the Town Center CID that y'all will work together to incorporate, you know, what you can as far as their landscape plan and street lighting and things that are pertinent to that area, to that Town Center CID district. So first, I'd like to add that the applicant's representative will work with Bells Ferry Civic Association and the proper, property owner regarding any security issues. The other step that I'd like to add is final site plan, landscape plan, and security plan to be approved by district commissioner. And then I'd also like to add that the developer, DOT, community development representatives all have dialogue with the Town Center CID to determine if adjustments can be made to the site plan to meet the spirit of the Town Center master plan, and the district commissioner to approve the final site plan. You're agreeable to that, correct?
Yes, all of those are agreeable to the applicant.
Dana, can you come up? Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Commissioner, also, we had been asked to clarify from the Town Center CID about the multi-use trail that we're dedicating the right-of-way for that, as well as constructing that multi-use trail that's a project of Cobb and the CID that crosses this property. It's on our plan, but we've been asked to clarify that.
Right.
In my conversations with Mr. Kepler yesterday, I told him we would make sure we clarified that for the record.
Right.
So I've got that here.
Okay.
I was just gonna simply hand to make sure that that was clarified.
Okay, can you submit that for the record?
I certainly can, and that's what this.
Because I knew that after planning commission, that was a direction to work with them on the trail, and I knew that y'all had done that with DOT and...
That's correct. We had reached that accommodation with DOT, and want to make sure that's clear. It's on our plan, but here's copies also for you as commissioners.
Thank you. Do y'all have any questions?
Yeah. Here's my concern. We got a long letter from the Town Center CID last night. We have a letter from President Olins. The staff recommended denial. I just think this is one that we need to see the full board talk about because of all the concerns here. I'm not opposed to the, to the project in principle, but because of the, of the nature of the discussion and the ongoing discussion, I think in order for us to make sure that we're all on the same sheet of music, what I'd like to do is I'd like to put this on the regular agenda so you can walk us through what you're doing and how you're gonna comply with all these last-minute requests. And that way, when we vote on it, we all know that we're all on board together for all the right reasons. So I'd like to just pull this and put it on the regular agenda to talk about for those purposes here. Again, I'm just not in opposition to Commissioner Burrows' program here. There's just so many moving parts to this one that I just like to make sure we all, we see, we put it on the record so that if somebody has some questions later on down the road, we don't get in the trouble of saying, well, we put it on consent and nobody saw the whole discussion. So that's, that's my purpose of asking to put it on the regular to talk about it today.
That's fine.
Okay?
Certainly fine with me.
All right.
We're happy to present. Thank you.
You're just gonna pull it, or do you?
So, John, I like to put it on the regular agenda. Pull it and put it on the regular.
In order?
In order, right, yeah. Okay, thanks, Kevin. I appreciate you working with us.
Okay, resoning case Z 59, Nancy Cool Martinez requests a rezoning from R 80 to R 20 for the purpose of a single-family house and landlot 317 of the 19th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Friendship Church Road, south of Chatsworth Way. The planning commission recommends approval to the R 20 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Proposal to meet all R 20 zoning criteria. District commissioner to approve the final house elevations. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations, and the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. Is the applicant present? That the record shows the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z 59? That the record shows there's no one opposed. Resoning case Z 60, Cabo Recers Incorporated requests a rezoning from GC to HI for the purpose of a specialized contractor and landlot 370 of the 17th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Dixie Drive and on the southwest side of Homer Corn Road. The planning commission recommends approval to the HI zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan submitted at this hearing, or at the planning commission hearing, showing a 12-foot building line on Homer Corn Road, a 12-foot building line on the southeast side, and a zero-building line on Dixie Avenue. Fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Resoning case Z 60. That the record shows there's no one opposed. Resoning case Z 63, Ashton Atlanta Residential LLC requests rezoning from CRC to UC for the purpose of townhomes and condominiums in landlots 816, 817, 839, and 840 of the 17th District. The property is located at the southeastern lead corner of Cumberland Parkway and Paces Walk. The planning commission recommends approval to the UC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Specific to the site plan dated July 7, 2017. Letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated September 27, 2017, with the following changes. A. Section 1, general stipulations applicable to the overall residential community. Item number 4, add to the end. Further, the applicant agrees to implement with the HOA a requirement that no more than 10% of the residential units may be rented at any given time. Further, the HOA is solely responsible for oversight enforcement of same. B. Section 1, general stipulations applicable to the overall development or overall residential community. Add to the end, item number 6, subset E, to read, "The location of the main Cumberland Parkway access point shall be finalized and provided in writing to the zoning division manager not later than October 12, 2017, for distribution to the Board of Commissioners." Section 1, general stipulations applicable to the overall residential community. Item number 17, revise first sentence to read, "All construction, employee, and delivery vehicles," and so on. D. Section 1, general stipulations applicable to the overall residential community. Item number 18, revise to read, "Construction hours shall be Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. No work on Sundays unless pre-approved by the district commissioner." Section number 1, general stipulations applicable to the overall residential community. Item number 21, add to the end, "Or that would be in direct conflict or contradiction to any Cobb County code or ordinance." F. Section number 2, stipulations applicable to specific residential components. Item number 3, add to the end, "With no decks or patios placed on the front of any of these residential units." G. Section A, townhomes. Item number 5, add to the end. District commissioner to approve all final elevations. H. Section A, townhomes, add to the end, or add to item number 9, to read, "Applicant agrees to comply with the Cobb County parking requirements related to quantity, size, and location." I. Section B, condominiums. Item number 5, add to the end, "Which shall comply with all Cobb County parking requirements." Number 3, driveway alignment on Cumberland Parkway be finalized by plan review. Maximum of 316 units. And staff comments and recommendations, including planning division, water and sewer division, stormwater management division, fire department, and department of transportation comments. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Resoning case Z 63?
We have a comment from commissioners.
Mr. Moore. And when he's coming up, I just want to comment on the fact that when this came in his previous light, the room was pretty full. And what you see now is that no one's here because the applicant worked with the community and came up with a plan that, that worked for everybody.
There's a lot of people here.
No, people that are here about that. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
There is a new letter, which I'm gonna, October 12, 17. Now, I went through it, and just, Mr. Samms and the other zoning attorney, if you give us a new letter that's pretty lengthy like that, you need to mark what changes you made.
Certainly.
Okay, because I couldn't find.
Sure.
All right. So can you tell the board what are the changes in, in the letter on October 12 from September 27?
The primary change was the submission of the new site plan that aligned the entrance of this proposed development to the entrance of the existing office development across Cumberland Parkway.
Okay, is, are there any other changes that were put in there?
The only other changes that were put in there were primarily most of the, I would say, 95% of the additional stipulations that had been requested by the planning commission. We incorporated those, so we'd have one, you know, incorporated as many of those as, we had written down from that, just to make sure.
All right, and so like I said, in the future, especially on...
No problem.
A stipulation like this, it has multiple parts. It would be good for y'all to highlight or underline changes for the board. And then I've got questions for DOT.
Amy Diaz, DOT.
Amy, you know, before the meeting started, you talked to the chairman and I and said that DOT was not going to approve a traffic signal. I'm a little bit confused because here in your recommendations, there is a recommendation that says a signal warrant study that the developers are responsible 100% of the cost of the traffic signal at the entrance if and when warranted and installation approved by Cobb County DOT. So it hasn't been done yet, all right? Then the next recommendation is you recommend the signalized entrance directly aligned with the development across the street. So my concern is, we gotta let the traffic study happen, but in your recommendations here, you say you want to have a signal warrant, but then you say you want a signalized entrance. So I just want to clarify that your recommendation is if a signalized entrance is put in place, that you would recommend that it be aligned?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
My question is not, I'm sorry, you're good. The staff indicates that this, this zoning has 12 units per acre. We're up to 16 points, 16 units per acre.
No, I think it says 16.
It does, but that's a recommendation from the staff. But in their explanation, they talked about that this zoning here, the norm is up to 12. A lot, a lot of pages here. In the staff recommendations, the property is in the high-density residential subarea of the rack. I'm on the staff recommendations, the pink slip. The proposed residential area, the proposed residential use is consistent with the subarea as far as use goes, but the proposed density of 16.77 units, but it's gone back to 16, is over the max of 12 units per acre indicated in the subarea language.
Okay, because when I'm reading, it says the applicant's proposed density of 16.77 units is slightly over the maximum of 16 units per acre specifically called out in this property in the Cobb County Conference of Plans subarea language.
Well, where's Dana?
It's like 12 anywhere on that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have 12 on mine either.
You know, I, I have several years of English.
Barely not reading.
Well, you're the only one with the pink page.
I will read it, I will read it slowly.
Yeah, I don't have a pink page. You have something that we don't have.
Staff recommendations.
Yes, sir.
This, this is yours, right?
It is, it is Mr. Pedro's book. That's correct, sir. Community Development's book.
This is pink, right?
Size Z 63.
Yeah. Yes, yes, it is. This is for the Ashton Atlanta Residential LLC, right? That's what we're talking about, right? Okay, I just, I just...
No, I mean, I understand you're reading what's in front of you, it's just it's not in front of me.
Okay, all right. I just, I just want to get the staff's comments here, all right? Is it says, is this, has this been superseded by another staff study that I didn't get?
The, the comprehensive plan has, has, has dual language as it relates to regional activity centers.
Right.
The norm... However, in the two regional activity centers, there is a caveat placed within the HDR category or in the category in general that says that density shall be determined on a case-by-case basis by the Board of Commissioners. So that has been added in there as a mechanism so that the two largest areas where the most intensity and most intensive development is happening has a caveat where you can choose on a case-by-case basis if you find it to be appropriate.
Okay, but in defense of the chairman, because here's what it says.
And I don't have a caveat in that.
In paragraph B. Paragraph B, it says, as I read, the applicant's proposed density of 16.77 units is slightly over the maximum of 16 units per acre specifically called out for this property in the Cobb County Conference of Plans subarea language.
Right.
In D.
Right.
It refers to the same subarea language but says the proposed residential use is consistent with the subarea as far as use goes, but the proposed density of 16.77 units per acre is over the maximum of 12 units per acre indicated in the subarea language. So I think where the chairman's coming from is both paragraphs refer to the subarea language but come up with different numbers. I mean, I don't have a problem with the 6.77, but I think where the chairman's going is
Yeah, just slightly.
I think the language should have been clear and consistent throughout that. I agree, sir.
Which just goes to what I've been trying to say here.
I understand, sir.
Okay, is that when we do these things, I read them, all right, and because I'm a layman, all right, I don't have the expertise that these other board members do, I take your, I take your language literally.
And I think what should have, I know it sounds, I take that back, I'm going to take that back.
No, it's a problem.
That was a mistake on staff's part, sir. It should have clearly said that densities within a regional activity center are determined on a case-by-case basis.
Well, clearly you explained it because the Planning Commission voted at 5 to 0 and proved it, okay?
Right.
So I'm just making a point about the density.
No, I understand, sir.
Okay.
And there's been a lot of discussion, and like I said, when the original case came through here with what it had in it, the, a lot of folks were here. And now I think the fact that there is no one here in opposition says a lot for the applicant and staff and the homeowners for working out something that was more agreeable.
And the last question I have is, there is a pretty significant rock structure in this, in this, will it be blasting to address that issue, to put the houses in?
We won't know until the Landis permit gets provided, although it's, it's likely it may occur. And then the fire marshal is the entity that handles all of the permitting for blasting per the health and safety.
And they're not asking for any waiver from the county code on that.
I just want to make sure that the people next door know about that.
Yep. And there are very detailed provisions.
I was a little concerned about the numbers. And then there's the part about the property, the proposed density is consistent with the adjacent properties that range from 8 to 16. So I get what you're doing here, I was just a little confused by.
I agree, and I think the language should have been clarified to be consistent as it relates to the future land use compliance.
All right, all right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that. Good, we're good. Thank you. Thank you.
Just so that, for the clerks, just make sure that the conditions are changed to reference the new letter dated October 12, 2017. And that's reference for the site plan and the stipulation letter.
Rezoning case Z66, Phyllis R. Johnson, request rezoning from R30 to R15 for the purpose of a single-family house and landlot 973 of the 17th district. The property is located on the south side of Paces Ferry Road, east of Randall Road. The Planning Commission recommends deletion to the R30 zoning district. And just to be clear, it is being deleted to the R30 zoning district, subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on August 18, 2017 with the District Commission approved minor modifications. Letter of agreeable stipulations from Ms. Phyllis Johnson dated September 20, 2017, including all attachments, variances as listed in the zoning comments, applicant to meet setbacks for R15, Fire Department comments and recommendations, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations, and the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z66? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
I have a question.
No, no, it's more just a comment, just so staff, I mean, so Commissioners understand, this property is currently zoned R30, and the applicant came in and asked for R15 because of the setbacks and all they needed. But what has happened numerous times in bindings is that there are a lot of non-conforming lots because when zoning was put in place, zoning categories like R30 were put on lots that were smaller than that size. And so the reason it's being deleted is because the application was for R15. And so it's being deleted actually to the zoning that it has, but then that puts the stipulations on it that allows it to happen. So that's kind of why it's done that way.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
One last thing about the previous one, Z63, the light will be something that'll be discussed with myself and the applicant.
Right.
Because it needs to go in for work to work.
Okay.
Okay, rezoning case Z68, 2045 Anderson LLC, request rezoning from R20 to R15 for the purpose of two residential lots and landlots 697 and 698 of the 17th district. The property is located on the north side of Anderson Drive, west of Atlanta Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval to the R15 zoning district, subject to the site plan received by the zoning, the zoning division on September 1, 2017, with the District Commission approved minor modifications. Applicant to provide stipulation letter to the zoning division for submittal to the Board of Commissioners prior to the hearing. Variances as listed in the zoning comments, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations, and the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. The applicant representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z68? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
John, did you address the right-of-way issue in the density calculation with Ms. Powell? Was it in the notes?
Not yet, Mr. Chairman. I need to really discuss that with the elected board also to see if they want to keep that or not.
All right, okay. We need to, it was in the notes, I just thought we need to talk about that. What's the best time to do that?
I could do it at the work session we're going to have.
Okay.
For the November book.
All right, good idea. Great, thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving into land use permits on consent agenda. LEP20 Kathleen E. Taylor, request a land use permit renewal to allow more unrelated adults than the county code permits. And landlot 186 of the 20th district. The property is located on the northeast side of Sunbrook Way, east of Sunbrook Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval for 24 months, subject to no on-street parking, approval for two unrelated adults only. Applicant shall not cause any nuisances to the neighborhood and inclusion on consent agenda. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP20? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LEP22 KCMA Corp., request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of a storage tent in landlot 174 of the 20th district. The property is located at the southwest corner of Barrett Park Drive and Airport Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on August 3, 2017, indicating location of the tent with the District Commissioner approved minor modifications, Fire Department comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP22? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into other business items on the consent agenda, other business item number 44 is to consider a site plan amendment for Encore Burleson ATL Hotel LLC and Encore Corpus One ATL Hotel LLC regarding rezoning application Z90 of 2006, property located on the south side of Wendy Ridge Parkway, east of Cobb Parkway, and landlot 879 of the 17th district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received September 13, 2017 with the District Commission approved minor modifications, water and sewer comments, stormwater management comments, and all previous stipulations to remain in effect not in conflict with this amendment. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 44? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number 46 is to consider a stipulation amendment for Phoenix GRP LLC regarding rezoning application Z31 of 2016 for property located on the west side of Kegel Road, north of Lowell Roswell Road. The property is in landlot 10 of the 1st district. Staff recommends approval, subject to reversion date extended to November 16, 2018. Letter from Mr. Garvis L. Sams Jr. dated September 25, 2017, Cobb DOT comments, and all previous stipulations to remain in effect not in conflict with this amendment. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 46? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number 47 is to consider granting a special exception for a reduction of lot size and public road frontage as recommended by the Board of Zoning Appeals from this September 13, 2017 variance hearing. Regarding variance application V91 Russell A. Mullins, staff recommends approval, subject to Board of Zoning Appeals minutes from September 13, 2017, and no further variances on this property. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 47? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
John, I want one question. Is there like, did the Fire Department, are their concerns addressed on this? Because it ends, you know, it ends on the street there, and I don't see a turnaround point or anything for the fire trucks. Just curious about that. It's a dead-end access road, so, and there's some comments about the turnaround cul-de-sacs. I didn't quite understand hammerhead turnaround. So my question is, is the Fire Department, they, are they, have, they, their comments are part of the record, but are they, are they fine with what, with what's being done here?
The Fire Department comments are made part of the Board of Zoning Appeals minutes, so they will have to do those.
Okay, all right.
And Mr. Chairman, just a hammerhead is basically a square cul-de-sac.
Right. But I just didn't see it.
And it actually, the hammerhead kind of sometimes works better for fire marshal because it, there's actually more room because it's not a circle.
Okay.
So that, but that's what it's referring to. And, but as John said, fire marshal comments are enforceable just like any other stipulation.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Thank you. Other business item number 48 is to consider granting a special exception for a reduction of lot size as recommended by the Board of Zoning Appeals from their September 13, 2017 variance hearing regarding variance application V94 The Wrigley Group. Staff recommends approval, subject to Board of Zoning Appeals minutes from September 13, 2017, and no further variances on this property. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 48? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number 49 is to consider granting a special exception for a reduction of public road frontage as recommended by the Board of Zoning Appeals from their September 13, 2017 variance hearing. Regarding variance application V96 Michael A. Matthews, staff recommends approval, subject to Board of Zoning Appeals minutes from September 13, 2017. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 49? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And that completes consent agenda. Mr. Chairman and Board.
Okay. Then I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as revised. One second, any discussion? Call the question. Pass the 5 to 0.
Okay, and the first case we're going to hear is other business item number 50. That would be presented by Mr. Johnson.
Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. This particular item is to consider a Chattahoochee corridor certificate for a property at 4248 Paces Ferry Road. This property was just rezoned as part of your consent agenda, and in order for them to be able to start construction on their new home, they'll need a Chattahoochee corridor certificate from the Cobb County Board of Commissioners. As a bit of background, there's a state law that deals with all land disturbing activities within 2,000 feet of the Chattahoochee River. And this particular, this particular construction has been reviewed by the Atlanta Regional Commission, has been found to be in compliance with the, with the state law. We are then asking the board to please open a public hearing to obtain public comments in regard to the issuance of the Chattahoochee corridor certificate, and staff would recommend a, would recommend approval of such action. Thank you, sir.
Can they get three minutes if they want to, if they have a public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, I now declare a public hearing open on the request to approve the Chattahoochee corridor plant certificate for compliance of a single-family residence at 4248 Paces Ferry Road. Does anybody wish to address the board? Does anybody wish to address the board? Seeing now, I now call this, call this public hearing to a close. Commissioner Rock.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Chattahoochee River Corridor as recommended by staff.
Such is.
Have a second, any discussion? Call the question. Pass the 5 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jen Dana. All right, John, back to the normal schedule here.
Yes, sir. Rezoning case Z27 Ameritech LLC, request rezoning from GC to R112 for the purpose of townhomes and landlot 422 of the 17th district. The property is located on the south side of Ledford Street, west of Atlanta Road. The applicant representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z27? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Members of the board, for the record, my name's Garvis Sams. I'm with the law firm of Sams, Lark, and Huff, and Valley, and Representative Ameritech concerning this application for rezoning. I have with me today a representative of Ameritech, and so he and I can respond to any questions or address any concerns that you may have regarding this application, either before, during, or after our presentation. This, this is a unique application. It's gone about 180 since we filed it in April of this year, and for good reason. It was originally scheduled for hearings within two months after being filed. And then there was another, a larger application that was filed by Venture Homes on a townhome development on Atlanta Road. And our original application was for townhomes for this site. So, so we continued that application, watching what happened to the venture applications, which went through several iterations and gyrations, and ultimately was approved by you as a Board of Commissioners a couple of months ago. And so my client thought that the climate was right for going forward with, with townhomes. The property in connection with this application is shown here on, on the overlay, the zoning overlay and aerial imagery that you're seeing. This is a 0.5 acre tract of land, as you can see, located on the south side of Ledford Street, just west of its intersection with the Atlanta Road Corridor. This is surrounded by industrial and commercially oriented uses, except immediately to the south. You can see there's a very large multifamily development called Madison Apartments that was probably developed, if not in the early 70s and certainly circa 1970. The problem with this property, my client bought this property a year ago tomorrow, October of 2016. And, and when he bought it, it was zoned general commercial. And so he thought it was fully entitled and ready to go forward with all the permitted use under GC. Unfortunately, it is GC but not located within a community activity center or regional activity center. So what that means in reality is that from the day he bought it, he had no entitlement to utilize it for anything at all except for putting up a zoning sign. He can't build on it. He can't develop it. He can't turn a spoonful of dirt on it. It has no use. So he came to me, and we thought, considering the, the changes in the area, particularly the 800 jobs coming with the Georgia Tech Research Facility across on the Dobbins campus, the fact that in terms of the AICUZ zone and the, and the Dobbins joint land use study that Dana Johnson of your division or of your agency headed up, this being within, at least decibel-wise, the quietest zone within that, that circumference, that this was a good opportunity for townhomes when we came in for six townhomes. for six townhomes, and ultimately reduced it to four at a density of seven units per acre. But what's happened since then is that further discussions with staff and area residents that's in that vicinity, many of which came out in opposition to the, the rezoning for Venture Homes. We looked at it a little more closely and talked, of course, with the district commissioner. Appeared before the planning commission two weeks ago. And at that point, they made a recommendation to rezonate to a classification called TS, tourist services, which still is a viable classification, is. And it's one of the few, other than industrial classifications, is actually consistent with an industrial compatible area, which this is in the future land use map, and has been in for the past quarter of a century. So what we have done, then, is agreed during the past two weeks, with discussions again with staff, area residents, focusing with, with the district commissioner. And we are of the opinion that the planning commission's recommendation for approval at TS, allowing no hotels, no extended stay, no motels, no residential use, works for us. We've done a preliminary site plan, but it was just that preliminary during the past two weeks. And so what we would prefer to do is what the planning commission has recommended, and that is accept the planning commission's recommendation for rezoning to TS with the, the site plan, and to come back to the, to the district commissioner for review and approval. Also, I think she, meaning Commissioner Burl, would, would probably like to add a few more stipulations and conditions to that, but just to simply cut to the chase, it's compatible with your future land use map. It's compatible with staff's direction that we've been given. And let me tell you what else is compatible with. I know that you approved Venture, and well, you should, because this area needs to be rid of the, the older rental project. There's plenty of opportunities for rental on Atlanta Road corridor. But I think you're seeing now with what's happening with Venture, what's happening with the Dobbins campus, Lockheed campus, you're going to see a vast change along this corridor, away from industrial uses, and more towards commercial and homeownership. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, we do respectfully request that you and the district commissioner follow the recommendations of the planning commission and rezonate this TS with the conditions that were imposed.
Thank you, Mr. Samz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Burl, yes, right, I just wanted to see if there's anybody else.
Okay.
It's all yours. Yeah, there's nobody in opposition, right, John?
Correct.
Okay, it's all yours, Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. I, I do agree with the planning commission's recommendation to TS. I think that's a better fit here, being that this is a dead-end street and surrounded by mostly industrial. So I do have a few steps that I would like to add. I don't want to disappoint you, Mr. Samz. I would like, first, to make a motion that we delete Z-27 to TS, subject to no hotel, motel, automotive, or residential uses, no tattoo parlors or pawn shops, no outdoor storage or display of merchandise. Final site plan and landscape plan to be approved by district commissioner and all planning commission and staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Okay, we have a second? Any discussion from the board, Commissioner Cupid?
I support the district commissioner's motion. However, I do have some questions regarding the assessment of this area. I do recognize Ledford Street is primarily industrial. However, you can look at the map and see that there is residential immediately in this vicinity as well. And I agree that the Venture Homes prior application also showed a desire for more residential. So I, I think TS is a much less intense use for this area, considering that people do live there. But I think an assessment that residential could not be facilitated in this area is quite limiting, just by looking at what's existing there and by looking at the recent decision that the board was, has made. If someone with G I S can pull that map north, I'm just curious to see what's south of that townhome community. So then you have, I think, is that where Venture Homes is, the F S T?
Correct.
Yep. So, you know. I, I don't necessarily agree that residential could not have worked, but TS is certainly an improvement over just trying to complement the existing industrial uses.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weatherford, any questions?
I guess I'm confused. It's, it's on TS, and the site plan doesn't have to come back before us, just?
The site plan, the planning commission said that it recommended it coming back to the district commissioner.
Okay.
Last one. What uses are being, are being considered for this site?
I'm sorry.
What uses, what uses within TS?
There are 50 permitted uses under, under TS, mostly, mostly retail, offices, smaller uses. The TS classification, I know you don't need a history lesson, but it, but it was originally contemplated for purposes of corridors that were oriented towards travel. Cobb Parkway, for instance, when it was Highway 41 back a long time ago, and, and other corridors such like Atlanta Road, that is, in fact, a commercially, to the most part, oriented corridor. But the onerous uses, if they could be considered that, were just otherwise precluded by, by the commissioners. So there's really, I don't think anything under TS that would be objectionable at all.
Okay, so they haven't narrowed it down to a specific use?
I'm sorry.
The applicant hasn't narrowed their interest down to any specific uses?
Yes, it'll, it probably is going to be a retail-type utilization, yes, ma'am.
Just to help you both out here, it's established to provide locations for commercial and service uses, which are oriented towards automotive businesses and interstate and state highway travelers. It'll be allowed on properties designated as community activity centers, racks, industrial compatible. So that's, that's what I got from the, yes, it is, pretty broad.
Yes, Chairman, which is why I was, again, just curious to know what kind of uses were considered. You know, because if you look at some of the industrial uses off Atlanta Road right now, you know, they are not, not all of them are the most attractive type of industrial uses. And again, considering the proximity to residential, some older single-family housing and the current multifamily housing, I would hope the applicant would be mindful in their selection of their use towards that residential nature of that area.
Yes, ma'am. And in fact, in the stipulation letter, which, which is applicable to, to both the residential and, and the TS component, we, we've agreed actually to, to frame the property with cryptomerias all around it for our protection and, well, for our protection, frankly. It's, it's, it's an area that, that has industrial uses, but it also has some pretty heavy commercial uses as well, even though the, the older apartment complex is behind it. But there's a little strip shopping center along Atlanta Road that we, we touch at tangents. But we're mindful that there is some, some residential.
Commissioner Burl?
Yes. Um, I, I do appreciate the comments, but the reason I didn't support residential is the difference between the Venture Homes is it feeds out, the access is out to Atlanta Road. Ledford Street, this is off Ledford, off Atlanta Road, but you have to turn down Ledford Street, which is a very narrow, dead-end street, surrounded by a welding shop across the street and automotive. I mean, it's, it's pretty much all industrial around it in a very small, dead-end street. And the access for townhomes just, to me, was not appropriate. So I, I, I think the retail in here, there is retail around there too. So I think that will help the area as well.
And we've agreed to all DOT recommendations as far as widening the right-of-way curb gutter and sidewalk and, and all those things, whether it was residential or TS.
Because I, excuse me, I presume then that there will no longer be access to residential off of Ledford, because there currently is access for residential.
No, that residential access stays there. That is, that is a, that is an easement that serves that apartment complex, has for years. There's also access to that apartment complex off of Atlanta Road, immediately south of the, the intersection.
So if this is approved for a non-residential use, residential access is still permitted off of Ledford?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
To me.
For the existing.
For the existing apartment development.
No.
As I shared, I'm, I'm not, not in support of TS and do believe that it provides a less intense use. I just hope if you look at the industrial uses even there and how it's being maintained, you know, a townhome could have been an improvement to, to that type of use and how people are maintaining their properties. And in light of it being adjacent to residential, it could have been a compliment, considering that residential, that, excuse me, residents do access Ledford currently. So again.
Well, that was our, that was our current thought.
Yeah.
I mean, our, our original thought, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Commissioner, Commissioner Rock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I support Commissioner Burl. I mean, the, the board has attempted in the past to do what Commissioner Cupid is talking about on Atlanta Road and put townhomes down in a hole where there was a row of trucks next to it and some other industrial uses. And what happened as a result was nothing but complaints by the residential properties about the commercial properties that had been there before they got put in place. And so I support Commissioner Burl and the fact that, yes, there's apartment complexes behind here, but these townhomes would have been along Ledford Road with the commercial uses on either side of them, and fairly intense commercial uses. So I, I think it is wise to not put townhomes there and instead put a commercial use. And I would hope that it would, in the future, work, Commissioner Burl's favor, with the apartment complex to kind of help improve that. So I, I think that her suggestion is the right one.
So my only question is, the original, the pink slip. Commissioner Weatherford.
Staff recommended to not.
But, but I think they recommended to mail based on the original, original zoning proposition. If they converted it to TS, does the staff, Dana, worry yet? So if, if, if they had, if they had recommended, if they'd come in and applied for TS, would your comments have been different? They would have been, okay, alright, so we're good. That's, that's my question. Alright, so I think we're ready.
Yeah, the denial from staff was when it was townhome.
Right, okay.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll, I'll call a question. Pass the five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Burl?
Okay. Res zoning case Z-53, Brooks Chadwick Capital LLC, request rezoning from R 20 to CRC for the purpose of retail restaurants, bank, and grocery in Land Lots 386, 37, 406, and 407 of the 16th District. The property is located on the east side of Sandy Plains Road, south of Shalford Road, and at the northern terminus of Hunter's Lodge Road. The applicant represents his presence. Is there anyone here opposed, rezoning case Z-53? Please raise your hands. Let the record show there are six people here in opposition, the rezoning case Z-53. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Sorry, Kevin? It's all yours.
Certainly, thank you. Again, for the record, my name is Kevin Moore. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Brooks Chadwick, as well as the owner of this property, Cobb County School District, in this application for rezoning. This property is the former site of the Mountain View Elementary School, which has now been relocated just south on Sandy Plains in a bright, shiny new facility for the elementary school. This property, however, has been a school since early 1900s, and is proposed for rezoning to your CRC, your community retail commercial zoning category, for a retail shopping center, and one that we think, and is intended to be, and we think will be extremely and highly successful, of a high quality, and is intended to bring high-quality and high-demand retail tenants to this particular location. Just so you, I'm going to go through this presentation, as well as I have some additional stipulations that I will present to you, based on discussions, I'm sorry, we just stepped in, based on discussions with those that have raised their hand in opposition, and hopefully I'll get those right, based on our discussions and that we've had with them over the last several months, that they wanted us to add. But with that, I want to turn to the, to the site plan itself, that will explain, you know, what we're doing as far as the proposed development, as well as explain, as part of that, the commitments that have been made by this applicant in terms of addressing issues that have been raised.
First, just to orient you, this is Sandy Plains Road as it approaches its intersections with Shalford Road here. This is the former Mountain View site, in terms of its surrounding area. This is the, I know Charlie's Target is located here across the signalized intersection here on Sandy Plains Road. There's a large shopping center anchored by Kroger, and a number of different other retail uses are located directly across the street here at this signalized intersection. This is the Cobb County Community Center and other Cobb County Senior Center is, property is located to our, generally to our, on our south side. To the rear, located here, is the residential subdivision off of Hunter's Lodge Road. What we've proposed is a retail site. This is a proposed grocery anchory, anchor site here. We have, also have the other various buildings that are spread throughout the site. We've also provided for adequate parking and propose that this retail site will consist of what we believe will be high-end retail tenants that will be highly desired in the area and buy and offer additional choices for those residents living in the area for their retail needs. Of particular importance is we've been meeting with and having discussions with the residents that live in these homes, and several of them are, are here today. And of particular note is the buffer that we've established and are proposed to the rear of this site. You'll note in your professional staff's recommendations that where they have recommended approval, given the land use in this area, they've also recommended there be a 35-foot landscape buffer against those adjoining residents. What we have done is proposed something in excess and far in excess of that. First, we have proposed a buffer of the first 30 feet, that would be an undisturbed buffer. Then we would install an eight-foot fence. That would be an eight-foot vinyl clad, black-coated vinyl clad opaque chain-link fence that would be located on this buffer line. That's the type of fence that these neighbors had asked for, and we've agreed to install that fence. From there, we would have an additional 20 feet of landscape buffer. That would be landscaped, the entire entirety of that buffer with a double row of evergreen trees, 12 feet in height, at planting, which, again, to remind you, most of the time, what you'll see and what is required is a buffer, a landscape buffer that reaches six feet. At this, we are doing 12 feet or doubling that size in terms of the trees for this entirety of this buffer and a double row of that as well.
In terms of the additional stipulations, you have a stipulation letter dated October 12th that had been submitted. This was a stipulation letter that took from the Planning Commission's recommendations for approval as well as included additional stipulations based on our discussions with those, these same adjoining residents. To that end, what I wanted to do though is, is go ahead and take a little bit of time and add four items and do that by presentation to you. Number one, and I'm going to have to turn over here again.
The first additional stipulation would be that as shown on the site plan, you have buildings number 500, 600 and 700. For those three buildings, the following uses would be prohibited as defined in the CRC zoning district. Building material, car washes, automotive body repair or repair of any kind, convenience, gas and food store, laundry or dry clean, package stores or communication towers would be prohibited uses. Those are otherwise permitted in the CRC category but are added specifically as prohibited uses for these three buildings. In addition. Communication towers. Certainly. Next additional stipulation, as it relates to our undisturbed buffer and fencing, that we would enclose that buffer, enclose that fencing or enclose the buffer by a fence segment at the end of, at each end of the buffer so that that would be an enclosed buffer that prevents kind of walk-through traffic that will be added behind their houses. Also, we are agreeing that we'll have our certified arborist inspect and review and evaluate the undisturbed buffer and identify any dead, diseased or dying trees for removal. And we've agreed to do that so that that aspect can be done as well. Lastly, we have agreed that for buildings 500, 600 and 700, that to the extent possible, we will also install sound dampening screening on the HVAC systems that will be located on the roof.
And lastly, I just, as I told them and I said I would make sure, I clarified for them for the record. One of our stipulations is that we have agreed that amplified live outdoor attainment, attainment, amplified live outdoor entertainment is prohibited and that there'll be no live music located with, within 200 feet of the residential property. And what that's meant to, to, or intended to be is it prohibits any kind of amplified outdoor entertainment whatsoever on the property, but it allows for, for example, if the restaurant location along the front that would have a guy with a guitar on the patio. So I just wanted to make sure that was clarified as to what was, what was intended with that and that is there's no amplified outdoor entertainment here. And I think it's also important that these are stipulations that are very similar in nature and kind to the stipulations that are currently in place on the avenues of East Cobb where again, you have a high-quality retail development that is adjacent to two residential neighborhoods, Ivywood and East Hampton, where it was successfully worked with both of those neighborhoods to put in stipulations just as we have suggested here. And with that, I'm going to respectfully request that you follow the recommendation of your staff as well as the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve this requested rezoning. And the rest of my time, Ms. Steiner is going to have a couple of comments on behalf of the East Cobb Civic Association. I promised her I'd save her time.
Okay, we'll give her little time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I am Trish Steiner, First Vice President of ECCA and Manager for Z-53. ECCA unanimously approved Z-53. We thank the applicant and Mr. Moore for meeting with the contiguous neighbors in ECCA. There were two meetings that were over two hours each that resulted in the applicant had, after the first meeting, redesigning and submitting a new site plan and line of sight to address the concerns of the neighbors. There have been continuous dialogue with these neighbors and individuals since the first meeting and this has continued until this morning. Planning Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Burrow attended the second September 26th meeting with the neighbors. The seven individuals who live in the four contiguous homes had written questions and concerns that were addressed and answered at this meeting. The neighbors received exactly what they requested, a new line of sight on Thursday, September the 28th, after requesting this on Tuesday, September the 26th. We realize it is difficult for the neighbors to accept any change from the elementary school that was located below their property for many years. However, this proposed zoning is appropriate and the applicant has generously provided a 50-foot buffer, an eight-foot fence screening and a double row of 12-foot evergreen trees to assure the neighbors and what they consider the integrity of the Mountain View Hill will be preserved and they will continue to have their privacy since they will be above the retail center on the hill, completely screened from view and sound of this retail center. Please vote to approve Z-53, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now those in opposition and we'll, you'll add one minute to your time if you need it.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Janay Morissette. I live at the very top of the hill. Development's on two sides of me and at this time, we'd like to withdraw our opposition. We'd like to thank Mr. Moore and the developer for listening to our concerns and addressing them. We feel they have all been addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Is there anyone else in opposition? Okay, Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. I too would like to thank the applicant and Mr. Moore, Brooks Chadwick and Mr. Fuqua for meeting with the neighbors and, and Trish Steiner from ECCA. As she mentioned, Judy Williams and I did attend one of the meetings and not all of the neighbors were there, but the, the main spokesperson was. And I think we made a lot of progress with concerns that the neighbors had and concessions that the applicant made to address those. So I, I'd just like to thank you all for working together on this. I know it's been some long meetings and a lot of time, but I think it'll be a win-win for the whole community. So I'd like to make a motion. First, I'd like to ask Mr. Moore, the additional steps, are they in this October 12th letter or do you have something that you can submit for the revisions you made today?
Those are not, those are, those additions that I stated publicly were, are not in that letter. That was a result of some discussions, some additional discussions we even had this morning.
Right.
And, and made that commitment that that was what it was going to take. So I can.
Can you email me a list and, and I'll copy the clerk?
I'm happy to provide those.
To submit something?
I'm happy to provide those and just, you know, as soon as I get back to the office to Ms. Jordan.
Okay.
And the, and the rest of the, and all of the Board of Commissioners, absolutely.
Okay. And I, I know from Janay's withdrawing her opposition that they're all in agreement. I just want to see it in writing to submit for the record so that it's part of the stipulations.
We'd be happy to.
Okay.
I'll send that to all of the Commissioners.
Okay. And, and I'll, I'll copy the neighbors and the clerk as well. Okay, and all the Commissioners. I would like to make a motion to approve Z-53 subject to previous step letters dated and site plans dated September 27th, October 3rd and October 12th. Final site plan and landscape plan to be approved by the District Commissioner and additional steps and comments from Mr. Kevin Moore received today that will follow up with the letter today. And Planning Commission staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Second, I have a second. The only question I have is, do we really have to work, start at 7:00 on Saturday? Or do we change that somewhere in the document?
Is that a pink page?
That is not a pink page. I was just looking through that. I mean, it says you're allowed to start working at 7:00 on Saturday.
Right, that's the county code construction hours.
Really?
Do I think that'll really happen? I doubt it, but that's just.
Okay, all right, all right.
But it could. It could.
All right, okay, well, if it's in, if it's in the ordinance, I can very well say anything. I can say something, but you know. Okay, I'm, I'm good with that comment. Okay, so any other discussion?
Nothing on Sunday, no, no Sunday.
Right, call the question. Pass is five to zero. And with that, we'll take a 10-minute break. Okay, let's reconvene this October 17th Board of Commissioners zoning meeting. And with that, John?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Rezoning case Z-54, Kennesaw Corner MF LP, request a rezoning from GC to RRC for the purpose of student housing and retail in landlords 502 and 503 of the 16th District. The property is located at the north, northwest corner of Big Shanty Road and George Busby Parkway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed, rezoning case Z-54? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Okay, Kevin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant and owner in this application for rezoning, which seeks rezoning of this 4.39 acre tract from this existing classification of GC, which is general commercial, to RRC, a regional retail commercial for a mixed-use student housing community and development to be placed at this location, which is at the intersection of Big Shanty Road and George Busby Parkway, which you can now see that proposed site plan on your screens, which I'll go through as well as to describe the general context of where this property is located and why we think this is not only ideal, but an excellent location for purpose-built student housing, especially within the context of what we've been able to accomplish with working with those that were interested, which you might call stakeholders. And I'll review those conversations as well.
All right, turning now to the site plan, just so we can point out some of the highlights of the, of the features of what we've been able to do and what Fountain Residential Partners, the applicant, has been able to do with this proposal. This is Big Shanty Road here and then the George Busby Parkway intersection here. Primarily, you will know this location as this across the street from, on George Busby is the KSU Stadium, is directly across the street in this location here. Directly across Big Shanty will be the new Children's Healthcare Hospital location, which is going to be right here. Continuing on around, you have Park and Ride owned by Cobb County to the rear of this property and the state Georgia DOT Park and Ride Facility also located on this side of the property. In general, where you know this property to be is really in the heart of the Kennesaw State University campus to, located on this side of 75. You have the additional athletic fields that are on George Busby Parkway. You have additional KSU facilities that are located here on the Georgia Department of Transportation property and other KSU facilities such as the Brand Smart, former Brand Smart location, which is also a stone's throw away from this property, essentially just down Big Shanty. Again, all KSU facilities. So where this is located is ideal for student, for student housing and purpose-built student housing in terms of its interaction with Kennesaw State University, its location and primarily also its location interior to that campus footprint as opposed to placing student housing away from that interior campus footprint, which is one of the reasons why, and you'll have seen it before and they were here previously, that is the Bells Ferry Civic Association is in support of this application as it's currently sits. And that's why they're not here today is because they are in support of this application. It stated that publicly prior to this hearing. Some of the things that we have done, want to highlight that in terms of our discussions with Cobb County Department of Transportation. You'll note along this portion of what is Cobb County remnant property here on George Busby when that, when George Busby was relocated and redesigned. This is a large multi-use trail project that comes along Big Shanty and turns and comes up George Busby and then goes across the rear of this property here. We worked with Cobb County Department of Transportation, made sure we had their plans so that we can incorporate those into our plans. And what we've done with that is made the commitment to dedicate the right-of-way necessary for the trail in a couple of locations along our rear property line, also along our frontage here on Big Shanty and George Busby, as well as agreed to implement and construct that, those portions of the trail also in an effort to cooperate with Cobb County DOT. And that's an important component, not only for Cobb County Department of Transportation in Cobb County because it saves you the money, but also it's important from the Town Center CID standpoint. That's an important trail project that runs throughout the Town Center CID. It's important to them and that was one of the comments the Town Center CID had made was for us to look into that. And not only have we already looked into that, we'd already had those discussions. Our project engineers had met with DOT to incorporate their designs and standards into our plans and we'd also made the commitment to dedicate the right-of-way as well as to install those portions of the trail in that location. In addition, this proposed student housing development, we have reduced the overall number of units. That has now been reduced down to 195 total, maximum number of units. That's a reduction from 215, which was prior. That was done prior to the Planning Commission. That was also in response to the Bells Ferry Civic Association. In addition, we have reduced the overall height of the proposed building. Previously, the proposed height had started at eight stories, went to six stories and then prior to the Planning Commission and working with your professional planning staff as well as with the Bells Ferry Civic Association, ultimately, we have reduced that height to five stories. And that was reflected in the presentation to the Planning Commission and as part of that recommendation for approval. This also has a significant retail component along the first floor, which will have retail along that first floor facing out onto Big Shanty. And as the corner, we think that's an ideal location. It will encourage the pedestrian activity to stop in for coffee or Coke or whatever they're going to have and what other types of options that they can have from a retail restaurant and retail standpoint that would serve that community. Again, being in the, within the footprint of the Kennesaw State University campus, the alternative modes of transportation, you also have the, you have the Kennesaw State bus system, walking and bicycling, all are heavily used by students and others in this area. And the retail will certainly play off of that and be very successful, we believe, as part of that.
Some of those discussions, and Mr. Chairman, you had brought those up this morning and I want to address those specifically. First, the discussions with the Bells Ferry Civic Association resulted in their support for this proposed rezoning and we made adjustments to account for that and account for the comments that we'd received from them prior to the Planning Commission. We have also had and had a meeting with President Sam Olens, President of Kennesaw State University, to review this proposal precisely in that meeting. It was his words, he was not opposed to our proposed project. However, he did want to see us include some certain types of stipulations into this proposal and those are represented in the letters dated September 27th, October 3rd and October 16th. And I apologize, they have in three letters. But in our initial letter of September 27th, you'll see in various stipulations where we're committing to partner and collaborate with Kennesaw State University to establish shared programs for highlighting the academic and educational opportunities that we can share in with the university. and educational opportunities that we can share in with the university, as well as highlighting our security measures and secured access. This is gated, secured access, this is not party central, this is a student housing for students, for them, their residents and guests only. But we worked and worked with and presented and discussed those issues with President Olens as part of that, and that's included within this stipulation letter. And then he even had a couple more comments and emailing me about some additional language he wanted it to see, and we accommodated that, and that's why you see these subsequent letters. In addition, we have had discussions for over two months with Town Center CID. I've personally spoken to Mr. Kelly Kepler, who's the chairman of the Town Center CID, on two separate occasions to review this and ensure that we were meeting their expectations for the proposed project. And per his comments, they were not, certainly not opposed, that's not the position that they take one way or the other. They did provide some written comments yesterday, however, those reflect the Town Center CID master plan, most, some and many elements of which we have incorporated already into this proposed layout and site plan, including the trail. We're more than happy to accommodate and provide for the lighting and pedestrian activity that we can provide and already are implementing as part of this plan. And the stipulation that Commissioner Merle read off this morning is certainly agreeable to us, so that we can have that level of collaboration between Cobb County Community Development, Cobb County Department of Transportation, the Town Center CID. But again, that is a collaborative effort to ensure that this is a project that all can be proud of and that works into the fabric of what has been established in this area, both from the university standpoint and the CID standpoint. But with that, we think this is an outstanding project, it's an outstanding location for this project, it's much needed. If you talk to KSU students, you'll see that there is just a lack of student housing, of purpose built student housing that's there to fit the need that is existing, not taking into any account what's going to continue to happen there at KSU, thankfully. And with that, we would respectfully request your approval of this rezoning with those letters, because those are commitments that we have made to what we view as partners in this community. Thank you.
Okay, Kevin? Commissioner Merle?
Thanks.
Thank you.
I was just going to see if I had any questions for you before I ask staff to come up. You do have a letter that you submitted, that you just handed out to us regarding the trail, and the developer is going to put in the trail, install the trail.
That's correct.
At your cost, at their cost.
Correct, on their property, that's right.
Okay.
That's shown there.
And then, we also, you know, received the letter from Tracy Rathbone, Director of Town Center CID yesterday. So I would like to ask Dana Johnson to come up.
Yes, Commissioner.
And Legal, you may need to weigh in as well on this, but the Town Center CID master plan was approved by this board.
Yes, ma'am.
And we, we want the applicant to work with the Town Center and incorporate what they're, what they can incorporate, and be in conformity with the master plan. However, legally, we can't really enforce those, kind of like our Canton Road guidelines, Powers Ferry Road guidelines, Johnson Ferry, things like that, that we also approved, but their policy, I guess, policy recommendations, and if you could kind of address that so that the Town Center CID and the public know where, where we are with this, and Legal as well, if you need to address it.
I think the overall, overall, the, you're correct, Commissioner, the board of commissioners did, did accept the Town Center CID master plan, it's been incorporated to our comprehensive plan, which is a policy document. Of particular concern to Town Center is one of their concepts they have in this particular master plan is a boulevard concept for George Busby Parkway, which is, as you can see, there's, there's probably about six lanes of roadway there. Their concept for this road is to go to two lanes in each direction with a planted medium, and then a two-way bike lane with another median separating the bike lanes from the overall traffic. The, that would be a substantial amount of right of way that would be required to implement that, and usually, planning documents and, and concept plans and planning documents are usually not things that we require during the course of determining land use rights for a property.
Okay. And I know that there were several conversations yesterday after we received this letter. And I also talked to the director, and I believe, I know Mr. Moore talked with the chairman too of the board. So I have, I've crafted some language with, with your help to address the concerns of the Town Center CID. And I guess if there are no other questions or comments, I'm ready to make a motion.
Lawyer?
Nobody has it? Okay.
Well, I will during the comment period. Just have a couple of questions.
Okay. Okay. I would like to make a motion to delete Z 54 to the RRC zoning category with the addition of these step, these additional stipulations. Number one, the applicant's representative will work with Bells Ferry Civic Association and the property owner regarding security issues. The final site plan, landscape plan, and security plan to be approved by the district commissioner. The developer, DOT, Cobb DOT, and community development representatives will work with and have dialogue with the Town Center CID to determine if adjustments can be made to the site plan to meet the spirit of the Town Center master plan. And the district commissioner will approve the final site plan.
Okay, you have a second? You have a second?
I have a second. Anybody have any questions besides me?
Okay. Here's my, here's my concerns. John, could you come back up for, Kevin, come back for a second, and put back up on the screen the, the site plan. Okay. In this, this is a parking lot up on the north side here, right? It's a parking deck. Okay, it's going to be a garage.
Yes, this is a parking deck.
Okay, alright. Just have two questions. First of all, I want to be real here, I was in college, right? And my behavior was not A. This is a magnet for party town, and I just want to make sure that this doesn't, you know, because this, since this is in the Cobb County area now, I can assure you this would be heavily patrolled on Saturdays. This doesn't turn into a party, a party central, because I just, I know when I was 18 and 19, 20 years old, alright, there was a law, and then there was a way to get around the law. And you know what I'm talking about here. So I just want to make sure that this is a residential area and doesn't become an area that we have to worry about for, for public safety.
Certainly, and yes, I enjoyed college as well, so I know exactly what you're speaking of. But the, just to assure you, I want a couple of things that were not present when I was in college, as far as housing, and that is for what's proposed here and the way these are handled today. And that's due to liability reasons, due to moms and dads showing up, and they want their sons and daughters to be in a place that is secure.
Right.
For them, it's highly important. But all access other than to the retail is secure. You have to have keys, access to the parking.
Right.
Gated, secured. You have to, it's all monitored with security cameras, and all public areas are monitored with security cameras. There's rules and regulations, and they will kick you out if you are conducting a party on the party deck, you're on parking deck, you will get kicked out.
Right.
And they have to do that, and those are, that's why you see that heavily mentioned in the stipulation letter, and why I think Commissioner Merle wants to make sure that plan is presented and discussed with Bells Ferry Civic Association and her prior to any permit.
Okay, I'm not against having fun, alright, I don't want that to go on the record, but, but I also want to deal with the round. The second thing here, there was an email in here from a Toulon Avard?
Toulon, mhm, she's Bells Ferry Civic.
Okay, so her concerns have been, have been addressed, but one of the points she made was the company that's going to be managing this campus, this, this development, has some issues in the past, but I'm guessing her concerns have been addressed, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, so with that, I have no other questions, thank you. I think we're ready to call the question?
Well, I have one more coming.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, the, the Bells Ferry Civic Association was in support of, is in support of this, but they did have some security concerns. Because this is a private development, there's really no restrictions that we can put on, because of the Fair Housing Act, on the student only use.
Correct.
And other people wanting to rent a bed or apartment in student housing, our hands are kind of tied on that. So because that was a concern, we added the security plan, which you've addressed somewhat today, but full, full-fledged, we want to see where the cameras are going. Our precinct one will be patrolling this area and, and working with y'all as well. So they will be included with the security plan also.
Wonderful.
From precinct one.
Okay. Somewhere also in the notes, so is the retail until 2:00 AM? Has that been changed back to midnoon or midnight, or is it still 2:00 AM?
Is that? Is that in the hours, Kevin?
Yes, I'm sure it's in somewhere one of them.
I don't believe we have. We had not been asked to limit the hours.
Okay, so you're just going to go by the county ordinance?
That's what we were planning to do, yes, because this is, we were not, we had not been asked about that, and that had not had been a discussion for us. That I can recall.
It's in here somewhere, just a lot of pages. Sure, go ahead.
One other thing in my motion, I'd also like to add for the record, the Town Center CID letter dated October 16th, and the stip letters from Kevin Moore dated 9/27, October 3rd, and October 12th. Is that correct? Oh, no, October 16th, I'm sorry.
Just for clarification for us, the Town Center CID letter that was sent yesterday, is that being added just for reference? Because it has certain things in it that are, has certain items listed specifically that are in conflict somewhat from what we're proposing.
Well, I want it submitted for the record that it, that we received it, and my previous stip that we'll work together to address what issues you can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll call it. With that, I'll call the question. Pass the five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, John?
Res zoning case Z 62, Cooper Lake Hills LLC, request rezoning from R 20 to R 15 for the purpose of a single family residential subdivision in land lots 257 and 320 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south and east sides of Cooper Lake Road, west of Cibetany Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z 62? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good, Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant and owner in this application for rezoning. This property is located on Cooper Lake Road. It is a property which is just over 14 acres, proposed for rezoning from R 20 to R 15. The first one, I kind of just talk about, number one, why there's nobody here, because I think that is important. At the planning commission, we had a few, a small gathering of people that were here that had some, a few comments, and we worked with them, addressed their comments, and that's reflected in the updated letter, which is October 12th, 2017, where we incorporated the, the issues that they had concerned about, and that included not only some of the nearby and adjoining residents, but also the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. And I saw again last night from Ms. Robin Meyer, an email stating that with this letter, incorporating the comments that they had, that they were no, they were in support and were not in opposition to this proposal. So I do want to toot the horn on that, just because I think it's important when, when they have a good applicant, a good developer, that is working with the community in that sort of fashion, I want to give the kudos to them for that. But now, turning to this application itself, you see the site plan on your screen, this is for a total of 26 homes. It is being rezoned to R 15, but I think it's also important to note a couple of things to that rezoning category. Number one, you'll note that the average lot square footage is just over 19,000 square feet per lot, meaning it's almost an R 20. And this is zoned R 20 today, and in fact, if you do the math, under R 20, without any rezoning, without any conditions, this would yield right at around 24 or 25 homes, we'll say 24 homes. So really, this application is seeking the addition of two homes, without really compromising much in the way of density, much in the way of lot size, and certainly, what it does do, though, is assure the community of certain elements of quality that will be present here. With that, with that of particular importance is along Cooper Lake Road, you can see this has a lot of road frontage, and what we've agreed to do is provide for landscaping and fencing, attractive landscaping and fencing along the length of that road frontage, so that the appearance is of the quality that we're proposing. And to that end, we've also agreed to a landscape and fencing review committee with Mabelton Improvement Coalition and Cobb County Community Development, so that those can be developed with the communities seated at the table, with, with obviously final approval by the district commissioner. In addition, we have a variety of stipulations that you would expect to see with a quality subdivision, but I just want to point out one additional stipulation, and that is if you go just south of this property, it starts with an adjoining property just south, that's not the subdivision. There are two small lakes, one is called Daniel Lake, and one is called Winter Lake, and that's because the Daniels and the Winters own those properties where the lakes are located. Those two lakes, one of them was noted in Cobb County Stormwater Management Division's comments, that we do a pre and post development study of that lake, and ensure that that lake will not be harmed or damaged for that. Ms. Winters had submitted a letter, she was here for the planning commission, we had met with her, and wanted to make sure that her lake was also included, so we've added that to the stipulation letter, that both the Daniel Lake and the Winter Lake will be studied from a pre and post development standpoint. And certainly, Mr. Brayden with Cobb County Stormwater Management Division also noted that, and that he would certainly require that as part of their stormwater analysis for this proposed development. Had many discussions with Ms. Winters, and then when we included that and had those discussions with her, and she was able to talk directly with Mr. Dave Brayden of Cobb County Stormwater, she was satisfied, and that's why she's not here today, and that's what she told me, she said, well, you did what I needed, so I'll, I'm going to do something else next Tuesday. She's a very nice lady, you know, I just want to make sure I said that and noted that for, for you as commissioners. In addition, with this stipulation letter, we've attached examples of the high quality of homes that will be built here. And again, with this proposed rezoning, we believe we've met and addressed all issues which have been raised for us, worked with the adjoining neighbors, as well as with the community association, that's why you don't see opposition here today as a result of those efforts of the applicant. With that, again, the updated letter is the October 12th letter, which includes those additional commitments that we made with Mabelton Improvement Coalition and Ms. Winters as an adjoining resident. We respectfully request your approval of this rezoning application. Thank you. Thank you.
Chris, you're up. Oh, Cupid, I'm sorry. He's reading my script here.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, he's missing that, you're missing that pink page. So I want to thank the applicant for being responsive to the residents that have inquired about this application and looking forward to a quality development coming into this community.
Thank you.
I received a letter from the Mableton Improvement Coalition, which is dated after the September 27th letter. I understand there's some agreement on the stipulations.
Yes.
Which include fencing along Cooper Lake to be included in the scope of the Landscape Oversight Committee.
Yes.
Dead, damaged landscaping plants and damaged fencing will be replaced within 90 days, and a concrete pad will be added to the sidewalk near the entrance to the subdivision to accommodate children waiting for the school bus and shown on the site plan with dimensions.
Yes.
Okay, great. Considering you're agreeable today, I'll move for support of the application and include those stipulations.
Sure, and those are included in our October 12th letter as well.
In your October, okay.
Next time I do that, I'll, those will be in bold.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
No, I didn't move it yet. I said I will include it.
Okay.
No. But I should have.
Well, you got a second.
I move to approve zoning application Z-62. All Planning, Planning Commission comments and recommendations to be included, not otherwise in conflict, and staff comments and recommendations to be included, not otherwise in conflict. Thank you, Chairman. Okay.
I have a motion, I have a second by Commissioner Weatherford. Any further discussion? We call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Moving into land use permits on the agenda. LUP 19, Patricia Hines, request a land use permit for the purpose of a daycare. Land lot 631 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Crest Ridge Circle, south of Crest Ridge Road. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 19? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning.
Good morning.
In addition to that, I would like to request, if not one, two, if not one additional child. The reason for that, I would like to have, well, children doesn't react too well to strangers. So I would like to have someone there to help me at all times, you know, the, the help for the children, for the child.
Mr. Cupid?
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, let's just walk through your application.
Go, okay.
Just for edification of all the commissioners and those who are here. You're seeking to operate a home-child daycare, and you currently have one.
Yes.
Yes. The state permits you to have up to six children. And you're seeking to increase that number, which would require you to come before the Board of Commissioners. Yes, through the land use permit process, which, which is a temporary permit. Now, you just stated that you desire to have one additional child. So the planning commission, they recommended a maximum of nine children. When you say one additional child, are you looking that to, to comport with the 10 children that you originally recommended? Is that the one additional child you're seeking?
Add it on to the.
Or add it on to.
To, to the one. That's therefore so I could pay for full-time help to be with the children at all times. Because they don't react too well to strangers, kids don't. And if I need to have a dental appointment or a doctor's appointment, it's something.
I see what you're saying.
Right.
So you're looking to bring on someone second to have someone of stability in case you aren't there. They have somebody there who they're already familiar with.
Off, off time.
Okay, can you tell me the maximum? You said one more child. What's the maximum number you're seeking today?
The maximum number? Well, according to the state, I have the space, is the reason I said that. See, they were saying, I believe they were saying nine. The maximum number that I'm seeking to have is. The maximum number there.
What are you requesting of us today, ma'am? How many children would you like?
I'm requesting 12.
12, okay. So I'm, I'm not understanding the one additional child. I see that the planning commission, you're seeking, okay. Thank you, Commissioner. I'm trying to understand. You're seeking one additional employee, which I believe was already considered. You're saying addition, one additional employee, and you're seeking 12 children.
Right.
So there'll be two full-time employees.
Well, no. Well, yeah, two come with myself.
Including you.
That will be two.
If one, yes.
Right, because the, the ratio is six to one.
Okay, and you're seeking to have a total of 12 children, which would be double the amount that you have.
Right, but if not, you know, less, I would just need to pay full-time help to be with every day with, we'll be together, you know.
Yeah. I can see supporting an additional staff member, because it does help with continuity and, and that, that argument is, is clear. I'm concerned about doubling the number in a residential neighborhood, which is why I believe the planning commission recommended nine versus the 12. You know, from a financial perspective, I don't know how, you know, certainly will limit the amount of resources you may have to compensate addition, an additional employee.
Right.
My understanding, Gault went out to the neighborhood and spoke to one of your neighbors, and they were, they were fine with daycare. And in your other adjacent property, they had some work being done to it, so there wasn't anyone who was present. Is there someone who's occupying that residence now? One, you have one occupied residence next to you. Is the other one that's under?
The, the two that's next, additional next to me, they are occupied.
They're both occupied.
They're both occupied.
Okay, then maybe.
I mean, because we're, we're very close, so I know that they're, they're occupied.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't received any opposition to your application.
If not, one more. I just want to be able to, while I'm in the process of moving forward to remove the children from the area.
Yes, ma'am.
But, you know, I'm grateful for whatever, right?
I would be supportive of 10.
Okay.
And then this coming back before the, the board. Again, we haven't heard anything, and you've been operating for some time, and we haven't heard anything. I'm just still concerned again for that significant jump in this, in this community. Unless there's any board member that has any additional suggestion. Yeah, okay.
My, my only concern is, in staff comments, it says no one lives there. That they don't live there.
Do you, you don't live in the residence where the daycare is?
Pardon me?
Do you live in the residence where the daycare is?
I, I do, but I guess the diagram of the house, I live total upstairs, total, total basement is total daycare.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, because staff comments said that.
I mean, you don't even enter in the part of my house.
Okay, her comments reflect what Gault's observation was, that, yeah, the whole entire floor was dedicated to the daycare that you own. Okay, so with that, I move that is to approve LUP 19 for an approval of 12 months, you can, with a maximum of 10 children. Other planning commission comments and recommendations, oh, excuse me, also adding one additional employee. Other planning commission comments and recommendations to be included, not otherwise in conflict, and all other staff comments and recommendations to be included, not otherwise in conflict.
Second.
Okay.
You have a motion, a second? Any comments other than the fact, 10 children?
Thank you.
10?
10.
Okay.
I mean, it's enough. I can move, I literally wait to move forward.
I can't wait to see you back here next year. That I'll call the question.
Next, next year.
Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
LUP 21, Edward and Julia A. Impfenzon, request a land use permit for the purpose of allowing more unrelated adults than county code permits in land lot 766 of the 16th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Canton Hills Court, east of Middlewood Drive. The applicant is here. Is anyone here opposed to LUP 21? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good morning, Board. I appreciate you listening to my case. What I'm asking for is a variance, and let me explain why. We have, I have my son and three young men that are 20 years of age, two attending school at Kennesaw State, two working full-time that have grown up in that area. They've from grammar school to middle school to high school graduated, and now they're coming into their manliness. And their parents live within three miles of that, that property. And what we were, and I give them, I own the property, so I'm giving them a discounted rate as they grow. And two of these kids going to school, it'd be a hardship on them financially if we pulled them out of there. The other two, I, I can leave there. But what we're asking for is, is a two-year, I guess a variance lasts for two years. We've had no complaints about the kids as far as, that it's not party central as you, as you suggested earlier. There's no loud music being played. They're good kids, and they just want to stay in the area where they grew up. And I'm in a position to help them do that. You know, so requesting a, a variance to, to help these young men out.
Okay, thank you. Chris, you're up.
Okay, let me see if I get this straight, because in reading the staff notes here, what you're saying and what they're saying are not the same thing. So you're saying that out of the four people that are in there, two of them are related?
One, one, my brother, my son, one's my son. There's three outside, yes, sir.
All right. And how long have they been living here?
Over six months. I didn't know there was a law against it, so. I didn't, I didn't know there was, as a property, I didn't know that.
And how long have you owned the property?
11 years, and I've always rented it to families. Because I, I bought my rental properties in the school districts, you know, Pope, High School, because families would come there and attend the school. But I've no, I didn't know about the, the rezoning.
Okay, and how many, it says in here that there's four vehicles. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Two parked in the garage, two parked in the driveway. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Sir.
That's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Does any of us have any questions, comments?
Sure, Chris Cupid?
What prompted this application? Was it a?
It was code violation.
For, they were parking in the street. And once we got that, I, I told them to park in the parking, park two cars in the garage and two in the driveway.
Okay.
Can we zoom out and see where this is? I'm not familiar. Said they were going to college. Where are they going to college?
Two are going to Kennesaw State.
Yeah, so this is not anywhere. I mean, I know we've had issues in the past.
Nowhere near.
It's nowhere near KSU. It's, it's a regular neighborhood.
That's what I was trying to see, but I don't.
So, so I'm assuming that this is the house that you bought near Pope?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In the area that they grew up in, in.
Well, yeah, that's true, yeah, it's real.
No, it's Pope High School District.
Yeah, it's.
It's, it's close to Walt, but it's Pope High School District.
Okay, and no one else has any other questions?
Well, I do. This is a result of code enforcement?
Yes, ma'am.
And we've also had some emails on this.
Right, but nobody's here.
Right, okay. But I, I'm just.
No, no, you're, you're right. We've had, we've had emails, it was code enforcement. But unlike the situations that you've had to deal with over by KSU, we've had the whole neighborhood show up concerned that they were blocking the street. Just don't have that today. I mean, it is a cold sack, I know, and.
Could you just, could, could you show me where 3013 and 3004 are on this map? Which, which are those houses?
If he puts the, he can put the addresses on there.
Because these are the people that, that supported your application. I'm just trying to see where those.
All the immediate neighbors, on both sides.
So they're on both sides of you, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, one's on the one on the left, one's on the right?
Yes.
Right, so the, the supporting letters would say that there's not a party house? If.
Yeah, that's, I'm just looking at the supporting.
Right.
Letter here. And then we have a letter from Cynthia Bachman, who says, her, her big thing is that it's a residential neighborhood. So she, she opposes it in principle because we don't want to be running into people.
But, well, if.
In this case here.
If they weren't here, you would be renting that, you've been renting the house anyway, right?
Yes, sir. And the people have, they were there before, had four cars. And they were family with six kids, or four kids. Two adult cars and two kids were in high school. So they, the car.
And what year are the, what year are the kids that are in KSU?
Sir.
What year are they in?
They're June, they're sophomore, both sophomore.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
Nope.
All right. I'm going to make a motion to approve land use permit number 21 for one year. Just.
Yes, sir.
Because I want, I want to have you back here any year.
Yes, sir.
To find out how things are going. With the condition that, yeah. I can do my own motions, thank you. With no cars parking on the street.
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, I understand they may be temporary if someone's coming over to study and everything like that, but every effort should be made to have the cars in the driveway.
Yes, sir.
The garage cannot be used for living space or storage.
Yes, sir.
So that two cars can park in the garage.
Okay.
So that would be the motion.
Can Mr. Cupid second it? Any further discussion? Call the question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And moving into special land use permits on the agenda. SLEP 11, K&amp;J Towing LLC, request a special land use permit for the purpose of a towing and impound lot in land lots 595 and 596 of the 18th District. The property is located on the southeast side of Six Flags Parkway, west of Bishop Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP 11? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
All right.
You have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Richard Calhoun. I represent K&amp;J Towing. The owner is David Mills, and Randy Osborne is the property owner in this case. What we're asking for is a special land use permit for a towing operation at 284 Six Flags Parkway. And I've got in the handouts there, I've got a picture of the, of the area in question, and then some, some other pictures of, of the property itself. And what we're asking for here is, is essentially a, basically a two-year permit. We understand that a lot of times these are given permanently. But this is a, this is a little over an acre in size, the property is. It's a former impound lot. And what our client, K&amp;J, does, basically it's a repossession towing service. Their intent is to tow about 20 cars a month to this property. We've done all the math in terms of what the, the trip generation would be from that, and it, it adds up to about 175 trips per month, which is a lot less than the 10 trips per day that are allocated by all the traffic planning engineers for a single-family home. So we're, we're about 60% of the amount of traffic that would be generated by one single-family home. The property is totally surrounded by heavy industrial uses. There's the, the Burkle Company. It's a heavy, heavy-duty concrete foundation. There's the, the Berkel Company, it's a, a heavy, heavy-duty concrete foundation company. Cleveland Electric is a, is a very large commercial electrical company. PBI Trucking Company is to the east of us, and then across the, the street is more of the Berkel Company and some vacant property. We're, really, what we're doing here is just parking cars. We're towing the cars to the lot, keeping them there for not more than 30 days, and then when they're redeemed, then the owner can come and get them and, and drive them off. So, really, basically, all we're doing is parking cars, and that's been the use for this property in the past. The Planning Commission heard the case, they looked at all the staff recommendations and that sort of thing. They, they, they recommended approval of the issuance of the land use permit with the staff recommendations, but they, they asked us, they said specifically, you know, why don't you all talk to the commissioners about this and see if they will, will waive these staff recommendations? Because those are permanent, in, in, pretty much permanent improvements to the property for what is, what we're asking for is a, is a temporary use for two years. What the staff had recommended was curb and gutter, sidewalk and a deceleration lane and a commercial width driveway. We just don't need any of that and it really wouldn't do much good. And it would be a severe financial burden on the owner of the property to have to do that when all he's doing is leasing the property on a, pretty much a, a short-term basis to, to an impound service. We did get one comment from one of the neighbors seven doors down, Ms. Archer says, I don't have any problems with it, welcome to the neighborhood. So, that, that is our request, and you've got the, the pictures of the subject property. It's well-kept, it's incredibly surrounded by a lot of natural vegetation. You can, you can see in the pictures, there's, there's probably 12 or 15 feet worth of bushes and everything else, not only on the roadside, but almost completely surrounding the property. So, I think it's one of these operations that, when you consider the low volume, it's not likely anybody's really going to notice it. So, that would be our request, is that, is that we be granted a, a land use, special land use permit for two years, but, but the, but the conditions recommended by the staff, that the, we'd like a waiver of the paving requirement because there is a lot of gravel on the property now that's been there for years, and that's perfectly adequate for our purposes. We're not towing wrecked cars, these are repossessed cars, so they're not going to be, you know, presumably not be leaking anything. That's perfectly adequate for our purposes, and you can see in the pictures that it, it's, you know, it, it works, it's not a mud hole. I mean, the, the lawn out there in front of the office building, it looks, looks pretty good to me. So, the property is well-kept, so we would like that condition waived as well as the curb and gutter, sidewalk, deceleration lane and things like that, because they just, they, they're just not, they're, they're, we, we think they're overkill for what is a very low volume and temporary use. So, that is our request and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Ms. Cupid?
Thank you, Chairman. Six Flags Parkway is included in a priority industrial area of the county, which came before the Board last month, and we had a gentleman request the permit for a mechanic repair shop, which is approximately about a mile further down Six Flags Parkway at the corner of Lee Industrial where we have BFI. If we can get the GIS map shown on the screen, please. Okay. When this is zoomed out, you can see that, as was stated during the last meeting, that most of the industrial uses are concentrated south of Six Flags Parkway. And we had some discussion about modifying the future land use map so that residential was reflected north above Six Flags Parkway. But we also had some discussion about changing the character of the industrial south of Six Flags Parkway so that it was more amenable to being adjacent to residential, which would include the type of uses that are in, in a building and enclosed. And we do have some more of those types of industrial uses along Riverside Parkway, which goes further south into the district and closer to Douglas and Fulton Counties. And you don't have to zoom out to that, sir, I just want to, I'm just stating that. However, if you can go, pull the map back in, sir. You can see by the map that there are some very intense industrial uses, some of which we're trying to address and clean up today. Some are more noxious than others, some comport with codes, some we've had to address to comport with codes. So, there is actually, if you look north, there's some properties that look industrial but should, should have been used commercially or residentially, and we have some, we had a code enforcement action to cease activity there. However, you know, it, it's difficult to, to say no to this applicant when you look at what surrounds the applicant. The future land use map modification that we're desiring to put in this area wouldn't come forward until January, and so it is, it, it wouldn't seem fair to hold the applicant to that standard, which we have yet to put forward and adopt by this Board. The applicant was willing to seek a temporary permit, which would allow us the ability to review this at a later time in conjunction with any changes to the future land use map. So, I'm leaning towards approving it. I will share that I did receive a call, multiple calls from the same resident off of Hillcrest, very concerned about the area becoming increasingly industrial. I guess she's been there for a number of years, longer than I, I don't live far from this community as, or from this zoning site as well. And she's concerned about, you know, industrial creeping north of Six Flags Parkway. And I tried to assure her that would not occur, but there are still residents who, similar to what was stated by staff in their comments, have seen this area move from more industrial to more residential and have been looking for complementary uses. So, with that, I'm inclined to support this land use permit request on a temporary basis of two years so that applicant has the ability to complete their lease that they have on the property. The additional requests made by staff to make the transportation improvements do reflect more of a permanent change on this site. Should this come back for another land use permit, those would be things that would need to be included because that would show, if this is renewed, that they're looking to be at the site with some permanence. But considering that this is a short-term application, and again, no modifications have been made to the future land use map, I'm inclined to support this application. So, with that, I'll move to approve SLUP 11 for this applicant and this applicant use only. Subject to Planning Commission's comments and recommendations, however, with the following changes. A parking, and we'll strike recommendation number eight and just say parking plan is to be submitted to the district commissioner. Again, paving, reflecting that paving, that site would reflect the permanent nature of that site.
Right.
Excuse me. Also modifying DOT's comments and recommendations with respect to installing a deceleration or acceleration lane and sidewalk. Again, just reflecting that this permit is only going to be for a two-year period and any renewal would prompt consideration of those recommendations. All other staff comments and recommendations to be included, not otherwise in conflict.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
And Matt, complete your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, word adjourned.